Okay, so tonight it is my pleasure to introduce Toby's Team, which stands for Talented Entrepreneurs, Artists, and Makers. Toby's Team is an after-school STEAM-centered club at Tobias Southern Engineering School, primarily geared toward students in grades four through six, and led by Melissa Ricks. The club features students as they combine the science of a pattern with the design-built process. Each year has a different focus. 2019's emphasis is textile science. Students have learned what different fibers are made from, how they are colored and turned into threads or yarns, and different ways they can be made into fabrics. They've also learned different fabric treatments and ways to create useful items from various fibers. The students also learn sales, marketing, and accounting skills. Completed projects are sold at the school carnival, and the profits calculated by the students are used to fund the student-led improvement initiative of their choosing. Please help me welcome the talented entrepreneurs, artists, and makers from Tobias Southern Engineering School. Thank you for having us here tonight. These students are so excited to share with you what we've learned. This is our school board meeting. I'm really excited all at the same time. Anyway, so yes, we have been learning about textile science this year, and we started with some studies we did learning in our first program back in the fall and winter, where we learned about different threads, and we got to experiment with burning them, and bleaching them, and coloring them, and all sorts of things, to see what would happen with different kinds of fibers. And we kept a little journal, so if any of you would like to look at it, you're welcome to. We also, this part of Toby's Team in the springtime, we've been making some products. We're making some fleece blankets that are hand-tied and quilted. We're making some zipper bags that we're dyeing and bleaching. We are making some friendship bracelets, so we can learn about how we can weave and form our own little fabric. And we're also making t-shirts. We feel like there's more than this. Oh yeah, and t-shirts. We were practicing dip dyeing and bleaching on t-shirts and magazines. So this Friday is our school carnival, where we're going to be selling all of it, and practicing making change, and working with customers, and counting up our profits, and taking away our costs. And when all is said and done, on Tuesday, we're going to come together again and choose what we want to do at our school, where we want to put the money into, and just decide how we're going to make our school even better than it already is. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the students, starting with Claire.
Toby's Talented Entrepreneurs, Artists, and Makers is pleased to present Textile Science 101. Textiles are things we make with fabrics. Making fabrics begins with selecting fibers. Fibers used to be all natural, but scientists invented synthetic and hybrid that chemically changed natural fiber was about 100 years ago. Natural fibers can come from plants. One of the oldest plant-based fibers used, and it's made from flax. Cotton became more popular than witting during the Industrial Revolution because it was easier to color and wrinkle bust than witting.
Rye is a hybrid of natural materials and synthetic manufacturing. Tree pulp cellulose is mixed with chemicals and then strewn into fibers, like putting dough through a pasta machine. Today, rye is usually made with bamboo instead of trees, so it is more sustainable and feels softer.
Other natural fibers are made from animal products. Thousands of years ago, people used leather and pelts to make clothing. Eventually, people began separating the pelts to make leather from the hide and wool from the fur. Some animals we know... Some animals we know used to make wool are sheep and goats, alpacas and llamas, gorilla rabbits, and camels and yaks.
Animals used to make fiber are different in different parts of the world. One unique animal used is the silkworm moth. Around 5,600 years ago, Chinese people began harvesting the silk fiber from the silkwork cocoons to spin the thread. Silk is now used throughout the world, and scientists are experimenting on finding ways to make silkworms more eco-friendly. They are feeding the silkworm from the dying leaves. Dying leaves are still the worm produces colored cocoons, so we don't have to dye the fiber layer.
Since consumers didn't like the paper-y feel of rye on, scientists at DuPont went back to the beginning of the design process to invent a better synthetic fiber. Instead of changing the natural material, they tried a chemically copied... or they tried to chemically copy natural material, silk. They made a material named nylon-6 that was soft, smooth, and strewn in the same three-sided shape of silk. They used it to replace the boar's bristles on toothbrushes.
They're just gonna come show you their pictures. Thank you so much. Just a quick before we go, we did bring some friendship bracelets for our friends on the board. You guys each pick one. Yes, thank you so much for having us. I want to get pictures of the bracelets. We have a group shot of the kids. Yeah, we have gift-friendly. All right, we smile. Thank you.
Would Jennifer Johnson please come up and join me? My job tonight is to thoroughly embarrass Jennifer Johnson. Superstar. Kaiser Permanente Thriving Schools Honorable Awards Program recognizes individuals who are championing sustainable, healthy school environments. The program celebrates successes, recognizes innovation, and elevates best practices so that we can all be inspired. Jennifer Johnson, Hillsborough School District's Climate and Culture Teacher on Special Assignment, or TOSA, was selected to receive a 2018-2019 Kaiser Permanente Thriving Schools Honorable Award. Several individuals at Kaiser Permanente, and in community organizations as well, nominated Jen for the reward of her exemplary or championing healthy schools, and were thrilled when she was accepted by Kaiser Permanente National Staff. Eighteen other champions across the country also received a 2018-2019 award. Jen is the only recipient in Oregon. And this is gonna take a while, because she's an epic superstar, and I want everyone in this room to know the amazing things she's done, because this'll kind of blow you away. Jen's commitment to school, staff, and families in Hillsborough Schools is inspiring and creates a learning opportunity for many of those who work with her. Jennifer and her colleagues established the PAX Good Behavior Game. That is amazing. I've seen it at work. An amazing initiative that creates safe and welcoming classroom environments where students can grow and thrive, both emotionally and academically. The initiative took root here in HSD and is proliferating to popularity, spreading to other school districts in Washington County. Jennifer also helped establish the Hillsborough School District's Wellness Centers, another game changer that I've personally seen. Amazing, amazing. These classroom environments offer a quiet, caring, and inclusive space for students to reflect and learn self-regulation skills, so they can calm themselves when they are under stress. I need one of those in my room. We all do. And she has been an advocate for Playworks, an evidence-based program that teaches young people resilient skills to play in physical activity. As a result of Jennifer's work, students are finding healthier ways to manage their emotions and continue to learn in the classroom. This work has far reaching benefits, improving experiences of staff and of other students. Therefore, the superintendent and the board directors join Kaiser Permanente in recognizing Jennifer Nelson for championing a healthier school environment and for her commitment to our students. Does the Kaiser team have... All right, we are joined by the Kaiser team. Thank you. Say thank you. Tell us who you are. So Keith Forster, Vice President of Marketing, Sales, and Business Development. Excellent.
And I'm Annie Horvath with Government and Community Relations.
Excellent.
And I'm Elizabeth Bangford. I manage our health and education initiatives at Kaiser.
Excellent.
And similarly, I'm a workforce health consultant that had the opportunity to partner with Jen.
Excellent. Well, Jennifer, I'll hand this to you. A small for a picture.
Have you big hands?
One more for your president. I promised we'd embarrass you. This is it. All right, here we go. Oh, yeah, absolutely. One, two, three.
All right, thank you so much for those special recognitions. If you were joining us specifically to be present for the recognitions, do feel free to exit if you would like. You don't get offended when people leave after the co-chair of the meeting. It's okay. All right, so the next thing that we have got to do this evening is have our agenda approved. So I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve our agenda.
All right, it has been moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira that we approve our agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? All right, so it's been moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira that we approve our agenda as printed. If you would like to approve the agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, great, the agenda is approved. That brings us to audience time, the portion of our agenda where we hear from members of the audience this evening. We have an unusually large number of folks who are interested in speaking to the board. So I do have a statement that I have to read, which is very dry and uncomfortable. But if you are one of the folks who has filled out a card to speak, please do listen carefully, because depending on what it is that you wish to talk about, there are some specific requirements that we do have that are important to follow, so please make sure that you are following those. If you would like to speak to the board and have not yet filled out a card, you can find it on the back table there, and you can turn it into valvolta right here at the end of this table, and she can make sure that we get it back. All right, so here is our audience participation statement. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card, available on the back table, and provide it to the board secretary. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda, unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time at the beginning of the regular session. Speakers should state their name and are speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker. Five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of the group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include Board Policy KL's Public Complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. So once you come up, state your name, and then I'll start your three-minute timer. I will ask you to really be aware of the timer. There is one up there, so you can follow along. Since we do have so many folks who are interested in speaking, we want to be respectful of their time. So I'll call you up, and then I'll also say who the next person's going to be, so you can kind of prepare. Our first speakers this evening are going to be Sheri Anderson and Lynda Mokler, and then after that, we'll be hearing from Joe Everton.
Good evening. We are here to invite you to Hillsborough's Wear Orange March on Saturday morning. It's June 8th. We know there are some graduations later in the afternoon. This is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This is a day to recognize the devastating toll gun violence is taking on the safety and well-being of our communities. We know that as school board members, you are critically aware of these impacts on youth, and we appreciate all you are doing to keep Hillsborough students safe. The Wear Orange Movement began after 15-year-old Adia Pendleton was shot and killed in Chicago just one week after performing in President Obama's second inaugural parade. Adia's friends chose orange because it's the color hunters wear to stay safe. And after her death, those friends asked us to stand up, speak out, and wear orange to raise awareness about gun violence. This event, created by high school students in Chicago, is now supported by hundreds of partner organizations and companies across the country. Last year, our first event here in Hillsborough was very successful, drawing about 100 supporters. This year, we're bringing our community together again to hear from and honor survivors of gun violence, and marched with backpipes and drums down Main Street, raising awareness of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We'd love if you would join us. Thank you.
Before you start, Joe, after Joe Everton, we are going to hear from... Sorry, I'm slacking on the job here. Ladonna Wolf. What are you reading?
Joe Everton, 764 South East, 50th Court in Hillsborough. I'm here to comment on some important classes that we've learned to drop for next year. At Century, this includes AP Literature, AP Biology, AP Computer Science, AP Environmental Science, and AP Physics, possibly, depending if they can bring students in from other schools. And at Glencoe, I've learned that AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Physics, AP European History, AP Computer Science, Accelerated Algebra II, Intro to Engineering, Principles of Engineering, Visual Electronics, and all the programming classes. And classes for engineering and astronomy are being dropped for next year. And we've heard that some of these may be coming back in the fall... or they should be coming back the following year. There's a few reasons behind this, but I just wanted to speak to the board for these classes and my concerns with it. We've made some great strides in graduation rates, and that's an impressive feat. However, it's not enough, and we can't just have that be our sole focus. U.S. News ranks high schools based on several factors. Graduation rate is 10%. 30% is college readiness, proportion of 12th graders who took and passed at least one AP or ID class. Passing is over three times more than just 18. 10% is college curriculum breadth, proportion of 12th graders who took and passed AP or ID exams in multiple areas. The track of the four passing is over three times more than just 18. And then underserved student performance is 10%, and then the rest is rating and math performance. I raise this because, I mean, yeah, it's just a report, and it's just a ranking. It's not the end of everything, right? But at the same thing, this is what parents care about. We want our kids going to good schools with strong programs, right? And this reflects what our nation is watching in terms of that. I've been tracking these classes and talking to a lot of parents and a lot of people in the district, educators, and everything. I'm hearing a number of things. I'm hearing budget. I'm hearing forecasting, meaning not no students forecasting for them. Personally, I'm wondering if some of all the changes we're making in the curriculum are affecting how prepared our students are, so that they feel like they're prepared to forecast for these classes. But are we still giving choices to all students that will allow them to advance enough in math and science in middle school so that they can take the AP STEM classes that they need in high school to compete in the world? My bottom line here is, we need to prioritize AP and STEM, and AP STEM. If it's forecasting, we need to fix forecasting, so that court signs and court APs that are most generally useful for college are offered every year. If it's budget, we need to realign our priorities, so that the reality... to the reality, some of the best careers out there depend on these classes. And on the rigor, in high school, only AP offers, right? For some of these, you just need it. Why? You can't have a successful AP program teaching it every other year. You mean, right now, we're talking about every other year, right? For some of these classes. The best programs in the district have amazing teachers who track test results and student outcomes closely, so that they can improve scores every year. You can't expect the same results doing this every other year.
Sorry, thank you very much.
That's all right, thank you.
Our next public speaker is going to be Ladonna Wolf, followed by Lynn Borahan.
He basically just said everything I wanted to say. Ladonna Wolf, 1162 Northeast 3rd Avenue in Hillsborough. Just to follow up on what he was saying, again, I think for me as a parent, I'm wondering what's being done about equity. As he mentioned, in different high schools, we're dropping different classes. So I'm wondering how we address the lack of equity among the high schools? And I'm just wondering, are we thinking outside the box as far as if I have a student that needs to go to Liberty High School from Glencoe to take that AP chemistry class? What are we doing to make sure that we're providing, whether it's transportation or even just opportunity, at this point, it's beyond transportation? Are we just open to doing whatever we can to make sure students are getting the classes that they want to take? I just feel like it's time to think way outside the box, and whether that's having AB dates at different schools so that we can make sure that our students are getting everything that they want to take. I just haven't heard anything other than scrambling last minute. I want to know that we're proactively addressing how can we get our students the classes they want?
Our next public speaker is going to be Lynn Borahan, followed by Ann Henson.
Hi, me is Lynn Borahan, 224 North East Court. As a proud educator and as a parent of an incoming freshman and a sixth grader, I'm quite concerned about the mental health and support my son to receive at HSD. With student classrooms swelling at 40 students or more, mental health of our children is at a huge breaking point. We need to support students in the classroom where relationships matter the most. For some of these students, this may be the only source of a friendly and consistent adult in their lives. Our children deserve to have small class sizes to build real, authentic face-to-face skills that nurture critical thinking and communication skills. The job market of the future isn't building these skills. We need to have smaller classroom sizes to address and market these areas. But mental health is not limited to our students. It affects the well-being of our teachers as well. They are a very dedicated group of highly professional people who deserve our support. Class sizes of 40 or more with six teaching periods is over 240 students. 240. I come from a great state of Illinois where my class sizes were at 25, and it's 150 students. That's a difference of 90 students per teacher. That's a significant caseload impacting our teachers, and we need to support our teachers in and outside of the classroom. We need to fund school classrooms first and programs second. I urge you to reconsider when allocating teacher FTE. Our students and teachers need our support. We are losing great teachers. I am one of them. I left. I'm in BSD. You are losing teachers to Beaverton, Forest Grove, and PTS due to this crazy workload. We need to protect both our students and teachers. This is not acceptable to keep moving students out. When we talk about student-teacher ratio, we're looking at 42 to 1. That's not acceptable. My student ran and marched with me. 35 is not a number that is acceptable. He marched with me on May 8th to make a point that he is not just a number, he is a student. I am concerned about his well-being. Size matters. Classroom size is important. You ask any teenager. The relationships that they form with their teachers is really important. So the most significant relationships I have with my previous teachers are the ones that are most impactful to me. I'm a teacher because of them. I'm a third-generation teacher. I cannot profess my education and my profession to my own children because they see what I do when I take home at night. Please consider the FTE. Thank you.
And just until that question, you do not have to say your address anymore. We changed that a lot, so don't feel like you have to put your address out there for everyone to know. Just your name is fine, unless you want to share it. That's what we do. So our next speaker is Ann Henry, followed by Austin Ramsey.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to talk today about our, I guess, ex-marney football coach, Coach Mack.
Please remember, we can't have you speak about specifics.
Even if it's positive.
Even if it's positive, yes, but you can speak generally without naming names.
Perfect. I will navigate that personally. I am also the president of the Century Youth Football Board. I've been part of Century Youth Football for the past 10 years. Mr. Wall, bless his heart, he had to deal with us some years back and some issues we were having with Century. He did a great job. We had a coach at the time who didn't work with our program. In fact, he wanted nothing to do with our program. Recently, as of two years ago, we had a coach who not only wanted to work with our program, but became a member of our community. His son plays three different sports in the same area. The coach has been to every youth board meeting, and his wife is on the board. We were told or led to believe that the coach's contract was not re-signed due to the fact that they wanted to move in a second, in a different direction. As a community, we are a little dumbfounded on what that direction is, considering his replacement is his mentee, a gentleman that came out from the Midwest to help coach with him. So in fact, we're not changing directions. We're just getting a younger, more cancer version. So I would like somebody to look into this, somebody to do something. I mean, this is getting old. It's getting tiresome. I've been at it for 10 years. First with a coach that wanted nothing to do with us, and then with a coach that became part of our community. Please, somebody, please. My contact information is there. We'd love to have a conversation. You're welcome.
So next, we're going to be hearing from Austin Ramsey, followed by Steve Barrot.
So I want to thank everybody for having us here again.
So I want to thank everybody for having us here again. So I'm here regarding the same issue. An old program to a new program that thoroughly works way better than our old program. I'm a result of both programs. I was halfway through the change, and in my sophomore year, we got a new coach. And with this new program, we have a huge change in not only our players, but like the community. We're all involved together. We're generally just a big family. We're all involved with each other's family. You could name your friends, brothers, and sisters, like you're close. And I think the issue is that we don't, we don't have any closure. The players, the family, no reason to why we're being put out like this. I mean, we're just getting smacked at the end of the year with a, here's a new coach, here's a new program. Really, what I just look for out of this is, A, a reason, B, I mean, ultimately, I want my coach back. But however that works out is beyond what I can control. And my opportunities, as well as my class that we've had with college recruiters, with the opportunities, camps, clinics, high school combines, Nike openings, has thoroughly been a better, it's been better for us than it has ever been in the past 20 years. He's made a difference in two years that I don't think anybody else would be able to make, making us more responsible, not only for us, but for each other. We're not, we're not ourselves anymore. We're a team or a family. And really, I just, like Ed said, I really hope that we could have someone that would look into this, give us some kind of closure, reason to the team, the family, everybody, to him as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Brealt.
Bro.
Oh, Bro. Okay, so totally wrong, sorry. Followed by Xander Bro. Do you say the T?
Nope.
No. Okay, all right. Got it. I'm with you. Okay. You're in.
So we are a JAG family, so we're all here for the same reasons. I'm sure you can identify that just by the shirts. My name is Steve Bro. I have a junior at Century High School, Xander, who will be speaking next, and a seventh grader at Brown Mill School. I think I'll follow up where Austin left off and tell just a quick little story about what Coach has done for the community as well, just to piggyback off that. Xander, I don't know if I'm going to steal some of what you were going to talk. I have no idea, but I will. Xander has really taken to Coach really, really, in a big way. He has spent a lot of time in the classroom, helped him out, and Coach has become more than just a coach. Coach has become a mentor, somebody that he looked up to, somebody that he wanted to model himself after. He had a whole goal of becoming a teacher, becoming a coach, and following the same footsteps. The scary thing now is what he has witnessed is changing the game completely. He has seen things happen that shouldn't happen in a way that they happened. We are a huge family, and before Coach came around, it was very divisive.
Let's try to keep it general about program changes. Coach is sort of a euphemism for the name of the coach, so if you do your best to stay general, I appreciate it.
Sure. So the program now is definitely much bigger of a community, and in asking for answers on why a change was made, it was because they're looking for somebody that's more involved in the community, somebody that's more involved in the youth program, in all of the things that has already been taking place in the last two years. So if they're looking for things that are already being met, again, we are confused as a JAG family as to why. No answers are being given, and again, closure is necessary. There was also a nomination made for a life changer award for this person not being named that has not been endorsed, supported, or even talked about within the school. It's money for the school, and it's being ignored. And I would also like somebody to look into that, as well as the, is that my 32nd timer?
I think that's 10 seconds. It seems really good.
So with that said, I would love for somebody to look into the life changer nomination because he is a life changer and he's changed all of these lives. And with him going away, lives are being changed again in a different direction, and we need that to be fixed. I have plenty of documentation. I have a petition that's been signed by over 800 people that want him in place, as well as a petition signed by over 24, 2,400 people that would not like the principal in place at our school. And I have all of that right here, but I could, I could just leave it right here for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next speaker is Xander Bro, and then Kyra Ramsey.
Hello, my name is Xander Bro. I'm a student at Century High School. I'm going to be a senior next year. I'm going to be a senior next year, so it's kind of hitting me extra hard as I'm going to my final year at Century High School. This person that has come to Century High School has really changed the lives of so many. What you guys might not see inside the school, that all the parents don't see, but the students and athletes that he has helped out is tremendous. The school spirit that he brings to our school and assemblies in the classroom is insane. We just had our JAG Fest Spirit Week at Century High School, and if you guys, it's an old show, but it was called Big Time Rush, and he was asked to be in our big skit.
So please, again, let's try to, you know, speak as generally as possible. I know it's really, it's difficult. I know. It's just that's our policy, so I do my best to enforce it. Please do your best to help me.
This individual has helped our school. He, I don't, I didn't, it, it, it.
It's a program. The program is perfect. That was the way to do it.
Okay, the program. The program was involved in school spirit. The program was getting our school into a whole other level of all-time high of school spirit. With all these things happening, the program and our school spirit has dropped. It's an all-time level that I've seen. All the students at our school came and agree with me and backed me up that it's not good. The program has helped individual students, close friends of mine, becoming not good students in the classroom, not, I'm not, they just didn't care about what they did. And I've seen firsthand, the program helped these students become great students in class all the time, get good grades, get all these things. And our team GPA as a whole was way above a 3.0 as a football team, which is a huge number unheard of for other teams. And the program puts in place a study hall before practice every single day, for us to do our homework, for us to study for the morning tests. The program has brought out recruiting technique that no other program has brought to our school for the first time ever. At our school, we've had two athletes get scholarships to play D2 football for the first time ever. And what the program does is send or film to every single college in the nation, D1, D2, D3, NIA, Canada, I've seen it firsthand. It takes the time at, the program takes the time out of the program's day to do all these things for us. And you could ask any person at school, this letting go of the program is insane, and no one understands why. Like everyone before me has said, we want an answer. We want an investigation. And personally, and I can say on behalf of the school, we have lost a lot of confidence in what was going on behind the scenes at Century High School. So thank you.
Our final speaker is Kyra Ramsey.
Hi, my name is Kyra Ramsey, and I am a mom and student at Century High School. And I'm here also to speak about the program. I just want to say that my son went to school at Century for four years. He's going to be graduating this year. And so he was with the prior program for two years and with the new program for this last two years. And the last two years has just grown by leaps and lengths. They've done a lot of new changes in the program. One of the big things that this new program highlights is that they created a family and a togetherness that will be happy. They created where everybody does everything together, whether it's all teams kneel, or they practice together, or everybody's invited to go to camp instead of it just being varsity going to camp. Everybody gets invited to go. They have a superior workout program that gets offered year-round, which helps out tremendously for the kids that aren't playing in a sport during football season. There's lots of parent involvement during this new program. And like Xander said, there's a lot of college recruiters coming and taking a look at some of the outfits that we have. They've had people from Harvard and Yale. We've never seen that at that school before. So I just want to emphasize that this program has a trend of togetherness, and he's made the, or the program has made this Century Football Team a family, as you can see all of us here. So I think ultimately what I want to say is that there's been a severe injustice to this program. And a lot of people are really upset about it, and we want answers, and we want an investigation. And that's all I have to say.
Jessica, can you pass that in? We'll be down some minutes later.
Thank you all so much for taking time out of your evening to speak with us today. We definitely appreciate it. We don't have really an opportunity for back and forth in the board meeting, but I just want to say that, you know, we love to hear from folks and to hear your concerns, and that means a lot to us. So thank you. We're also not allowed to comment on individual staff members or personal matters, so we can't say anything to you about the stuff that you said. And it's not because we don't care, it's just because we're not allowed. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Sure. So I've got one more. I'm not going to accept any others after this, so this will be the last one. Rebecca, bring, can you come on now?
Yeah. Thank you for your questions. Hello. My statement's really brief, and I really don't want to address the program directly, but I'm going to just say this. Coaches like teachers impact and influence our children's lives. Our children connect with them. They look to them for guidance, and they stay engaged in the high school experience as a result of what they do and what they bring every day. The decision to change course in our football program was extremely abrupt, and it was without explanation. Like pulling teachers from the class, pulling coaches from programs hurt our students. It contributes to their disengagement, and it impacts our children negatively. My son is a freshman going into his sophomore year. He's not going to get a scholarship playing high school football. That's not my kid. But as a result of the Century High School Football Program, he's been more included and more engaged in the high school experience, and that is a result of the program that he was a part of. It concerns me that that just changed course without explanation and rather suddenly. So what occurred? I would like to know that. I think that we have the right as parents and members of this district to know that. I like to see high school football and academics work together, and I have seen that occur in the last year. My son has good grades, and it's because he gets to participate in sports program. And I just want to say that, and I also want to say thank you for considering this, because it is very important. It's important to our children, and I don't want it to be minimized. Thanks.
So I just, we typically don't engage in back and forth, but I just wanted to address a few of the things that were said this evening. I'd like to start with both the AP issue and the class size issue. We're fully aware that the funding for K-12 education is not where it needs to be in the state of Oregon. If you were to look at the seven board members here, actually, eight of Jessica's been in Salem a lot as well. If you look at the eight people in front of you here, these are folks that have been down in Salem advocating for additional dollars countless times throughout these last several months. We find ourselves in a situation over the last 10 years where we've cut $65 million from our, from our school district budget alone, just from the Hillgrove School District budget alone because of the way K-12 funding is in the state of Oregon. And this, this year, we're just, we were just on the heels of in the last month or so, wrapping up a reduction list where we had to begin reduce $9.6 million of funding because K-12 funding in the state of Oregon doesn't work the way it is currently set up. And so when I hear about class size increasing, that is absolutely true. We did have to increase class size this time around because the reductions we've made over the last 10 years don't leave us any other options at this point. We also, we also had to make, when we, when you increase class size, that means you have fewer teachers in the system than you used to have. So we're going to have significantly fewer teachers next year at this time than we currently do at this time. And so when, when principals and district office staff are tasked with reducing teachers, they also have to make decisions on what, which classes go away. So take, for example, a typical high school. Between three and four teachers were reduced at each of the high schools this year because of our funding situation, and that means between 18 and 24 classes were eliminated. So when I hear the AP courses that were reduced, that is not a surprise at all, and that isn't the whole of the list. There's, there is out of the box thinking that's taking place. Dale is leading a group of principals who are looking at, how can we provide transportation to see if we can get some students from one school to another school so we can have enough kids in a particular section to offer that? We are taking a look at, how can we put an AP course on pause this year, but the next year bring it back so that students have that opportunity? But again, there haven't been, over the last 10 years of reductions, we're left with very few good options when it comes to reductions. So I just wanted to put that out there. If, you know, we're in a spot right now where, now's a great time to contact your legislators and let them know your feelings on this. If they tell us over and over again that the most powerful thing that can happen in Salem is parents' voice to show up in that conversation. We talk to them all the time, but it's the parent voice that's really going to move the dial. So I would encourage you to do that. If you need a list of legislators, you can find them on our website, the legislator that represents your areas specifically. Then the, the Century situation with the coach. Oftentimes, the, we fully understand, first of all, your passion around the program is entirely commendable, and I appreciate that. It is obviously that your care for the program and the impact that it's made on some of the students who are at stake is impressive indeed. With that said, we have, we have to respect the right of staff members to confidentiality when it comes to any type of personnel issues, and we're really mindful of our legal obligation on that. So while it is totally understandable that there's a need or a want to know, our ability to share information is just not there. And it's not something we would do, and we would, we would hold that confidentiality for any staff member, any staff member. So really, that's what I can say about that situation right now. Do know that whenever there are staffing decisions made, human resources involved in that to make sure all processes are followed and it's fair to everyone involved. So I just wanted to share that information. I know it's not a satisfying answer, but I wanted to at least give you some background information. Thank you.
All right, we'll be jumping right into the rest of our agenda here. We did get about half hour behind schedule, but I think that we're going to make up that time. You guys, it's going to be, it's going to be something to see, so let's go for it. The first thing is our consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda as printed.
I move to approve the consent agenda as printed. Second?
So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark that we approve our consent agenda.
So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark that we approve our consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Is this the?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. For policy, I'd be on page 24, Freedom of Expression Policy, under Freedom of Association, says student organization should be open to all students, not to be on basis of race, color, religion. Oh, sorry, it's a long one. I'm trying to get it short. My question is, I went and looked at some of the, and I've already sent these to Mike, so he has the answers for me. I just want to get my question out. Some of the, the student organizations that I see on the websites from the high schools, I went to each of the high schools and just kind of looked at them. It wasn't clear to me who's welcome in, you know, Full Spectrum, or the Spectrum, or the Democratic. There just wasn't a real, I just want to make sure that we really truly are being inclusive and not exclusive. And then I noticed that on IGDA policy, which is page 44, student organizations, it doesn't say anything about the above, where student organizations should be open to all students.
So let me, let me address something. Is this it?
Go.
So, so yeah, thank you for the questions in advance. That's always helpful. When it comes to who is, who's the group intended for and who is welcome to attend, our goal is, well, first of all, yes, it's open to all. Our goal, though, is to also, through a description of the purpose of the club or activity, or through just the mission, that it's clear to which a group of students this is going to be most attracted to. And so while, yes, it is open to all, and we would not prohibit any students from attending, there is also a purpose for the club that we would like to have communicated as well. You looked up some examples of various high schools, a couple of clubs at each high school, and found that maybe the purpose or the statement, "This is open to all," is not included in there. It's in some of them, it's not in others.
Right.
And so that's, that's a change that we need to make.
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, what is the purpose of this group? Because here's the name, here's the advisor, here's when they meet, but it doesn't say anything about, I just think it would be easier for students to, and parents to say, oh, that might be something you're interested in, if they know what it is.
Yeah, I agree. And we, and that's something we'll take care of. Dale had already taken notes on how we're going to go about that. I think, you know, a good, a good example of that is the GSAs that are at each of the high schools. They, some are different names, but the GSAs, for example, that, that is to advocate for a group of students, but it also includes the allies and students who are interested in that conversation as well.
Right.
I think we just need to do a better job of making that really clear to everybody.
Okay. My other questions are on different, on ARs, so I will please.
Are they in the consent agenda?
Yes. Let me look. Well, the ARs aren't there in the regular agenda.
Okay, great.
But let me see where this one is. This one's, yeah, that's in the next section as well.
Martin?
Yes, since there's retirements noted in here, I just wanted to thank Mike and the administration for, once again, putting on a very, very wonderful, Beth, particular retirement celebration for the 50-ish people who are retiring. And I just want to blow everybody's socks off. 1,200 years of experience are retiring this year from Hillsborough School District. It's kind of a leisure minded. Thank you, Mike.
Wonderful. Okay. Any other? No, that's just me. Sorry. Okay. All right. So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark that we approve the consent agenda as printed. If you would like to approve the consent agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If not, please say no. All right, that passes. Wonderful. Does anybody happen to know what page we're going to?
Action item?
Yeah.
117.
Okay. So we're going to go to page 117, where we approve gifts and donations with Michelle. We are excited that this is no longer on the consent agenda so that we can give it its fall glory and day in the sun.
You look for a motion?
I'm ready to, yeah, I was just saying, ready for a motion.
I move that the board of directors accept the donations listed in the board meeting packet.
Second? All right. It's been moved by Martin and seconded by Jackie that we accept the gifts and donations listed in the board meeting packet. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay. I want to say, great job, Rose Deal, and that's exciting for Broner. I'm always in awe of how much money the PTOs, PTA's, PTCs, et cetera, are able to raise for their schools, so that's awesome. All right. So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Jackie that we, the board of directors accept the donations listed in the board meeting packet. If you would like to accept those donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If not, please say no. Okay, those donations are accepted. Now we are approving the boundary adjustment process. So first I'll look for a motion, and then we'll do discussion questions and conversation.
I move that the board of directors approve the proposed boundary adjustment process for 2019, 2022.
Okay.
Yedira?
Okay. Oh, Yedira, perfect. So moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira. Mike, is there anything you want to share?
Just that we have, we reviewed this the last couple of months, on April 30th. We went through what the recommendation would be to include the guiding principles, the timeline in the process. We'll see that that's all printed here to reflect your input, and just recommend that we move forward with discussion and adoption of this.
Any questions or comments? All right. It's been moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira that the board of directors approve the proposed boundary adjustment process for 2019, 2022. If you would like to approve that process, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, that process is approved. Wonderful. And that brings us to the facility naming process. So let's do a motion, and then we can do the same process that we just did.
I move that the board of directors approve the proposed facility naming process.
By Jackie, who would like to second that? Second. Yedira, the second, and there it is. I lost it. Perfect. So it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Yedira. Mike, any highlights for us?
Just same situation. We talked about this a couple of times. The process here reflects all of your input. The one catch on this, I would say, under process, the second to the last bullet. I want to make sure here, oh, right, okay, never mind. It is plural. I want to make sure that more than one name is being forwarded to you for consideration. We'll see that we've also reflected your input regarding outreach to the community and making sure that there's a broad base of input prior to the recommendations moving forward to the board.
Any other comments or questions? I would just say that on the third bullet point, we're missing an end parentheses that we should add if we're going to put it up anywhere. Smiling comment. All right, wonderful. So it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Yedira that we approve the facility naming process. If you would like to approve that process, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, that is approved. Wonderful. We're now at approved financing of school buses, so let's have a motion for that, and then we can hear a little bit from Michelle, and that'll be 24 more.
I move that the board of directors approve financing of 13 vehicles on a five-year lease with an annual payment not to exceed $259,989.20, and adopt a resolution for reimbursement as required by U.S. Bank Government Leasing.
Second. All right. So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Erica that we approve the financing of these school buses. Michelle, any information you want to share with us about this?
No, I'm not going to answer any questions. And we are leaving.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments for Michelle about the school bus? Okay. It's been moved by Mark, or Mark, sorry, and seconded by Erica, that the board of directors approve the financing of 13 vehicles on a five-year lease with an annual payment not to exceed $259,989.20, and adopt a resolution for reimbursement as required by U.S. Bank Government Leasing. If you would like to approve that financing, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That's approved. Thank you. That brings us to the dedication of the deed.
I move that the board of directors approve the dedication deed included in the May 28 board meeting packet and authorize the Capitol Projects Officer to sign the dedication deed to the city of Hillsborough for the property described in exhibit A and depicted in exhibit B.
Second. It's been moved by Yedira and seconded by Erica that we approve the dedication of this deed. Casey, any, I know we had some information in here and in our packet, but is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
No, Adam, it's, no, I give you the result.
Okay, wonderful. Any questions or comments for Adam or for Casey? Okay, so it's been moved by Yedira and seconded by Erica that the board of directors approve the dedication deed included in the May 28 board meeting packet and authorize the Capitol Projects Officer to sign the dedication deed to the city of Hillsborough for the property described in exhibit A and depicted in exhibit B. If you would like to approve that dedication of the deed, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That's approved. Thank you. All right, we are now at item six, approve a four-party memorandum of understanding. And I have to get there before I'm ready to repeat you, but if you're there, you can certainly make a motion.
I move that the board of directors approve the four-party memorandum of understanding between the Hillsborough School District, Washington County, Clean Water Services, and the City of Hillsborough for Service Water Management.
Okay. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Yedira that we approve the four-party MOU. Casey, any highlights or details? Adam, you're on there too, sorry, keep him on you.
No, except to say that I know Service Water Management doesn't sound like a super exciting thing. This has been a long time coming. It's something we've been working on for well over a year. And the fact that we're ready to give the four parties to this agreement, all to agree on this language, was pretty remarkable. I think it's, it's a testament to the good work that we're doing as a city, as a community.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yep, I see, Martin, go ahead, Martin.
Well, I just wanted to add, I thank you, Adam, for meeting me out there and walking the church. Butter Nut Creek is an unincorporated Washington County, and so it's a bit of a no man's land. There really isn't anybody looking out for the community proactively like you might find in a city. You know, the way the adjoining enablers were laid out and built out, they didn't have appropriate storm drainage. So they're trying to go back, you know, 50 years after the fact and prevent runoff from going directly into the creek and surge and, you know, particularly, when you look at the bridge that HSD built over Butter Nut Creek, it breaks your heart, the quality of the water in Butter Nut Creek itself. But nevertheless, it did cost Butter Nut Creek Elementary School open space, and that reappears to me. There isn't a public park in the Butter Nut Creek attendance area, and so we had to sacrifice some, some open green space that we had mowed. I don't know what the acreage is. It's probably a mountain acre that we're giving up. It isn't necessarily proximal to the school, but it was area where kids played and, you know, fly planes and launch rockets and all that kind of stuff. So looking ahead, there is a pocket neighborhood, Parker Court, that doesn't have real good connectivity to Butter Nut Creek Elementary School. There's a bus stop on 209th, and what the principals told me is most of the time the kids bail out of the bus stop, or frequently they bail out of the bus stop, just walk up 209th and then down Kidman, and they get to Butter Nut Creek that way rather than waiting on the bus. There is a way to connect that neighborhood back through Butter Nut Creek Drainage to HSD's bridge. And so I think if the district were willing to take that on and champion that cause, there maybe is a way to do that, but it would require a pretty heavy staff lift. There is a metro bond that's about to go out, and they're going to, they're going to raise hundreds of millions of dollars for just this issue. There is, say, Roots of the Schools program, because somebody's going to have to take this on and work with an HOA, you know, maybe procure right of way or, you know, engage with the HOA. When the land was all laid out, it was clear that they envisioned connectivity from these various neighborhoods to the Butter Nut Creek Elementary School site. But the HOAs never really stood up and operated, and so it became a mountain of Himalay and Blackberries, that they subsequently leased to individual landowners. And so now these landowners basically extend their backyard across what was originally conceived of as pedestrian connectivity, all the way down into essentially what is the creek itself. So when you look now at the desire to create, you know, a path for kids to walk, it's a bit vexing, and it complicates now with a 21st century understanding of what a wetland is. And like I say, it would be a heavy lift. But you know, the only person, the only entity in the, in the room that is interested in doing this would be HSD. There's no park provider, there's no city, the county's not going to do it, Clean Water Services isn't going to do it, the City of Hillsborough isn't going to do it, the HOA's not going to do it. And so if we really want to achieve this pedestrian connectivity back to this particular neighborhood, it would have to be something that HSD would champion under the auspices of facilitating kids walking to school. And I say all this because, you know, I live in that community, and I understand the governance is spotty, and there's, there just really isn't anybody taking on these community issues. So it's a little bit heartbreaking to see this opportunity there and to see this investment on behalf of Clean Water, but there's no matching investment with respect to connectivity or any of the other community interests. Thank you for listening. It's a bit of a mini round.
So just to tag on to what Martin said, that we are working with our, the civil engineer that hired to help us put together this IGA. Nothing we're doing with this IGA is going to profit us for moving forward with that, and we will. We just need to figure out what the next steps are in that process.
Yeah. Thank you, Adam. And I, again, I appreciate Adam and the civil engineer that works with the district with Adam meeting out there on several occasions and walking the side with me. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. So it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Yedira that the board of directors approve the four-party memorandum of understanding between the Hillsborough School District, Washington County, Clean Water Services, and the City of Hillsborough for Service Water Management. If you would like to approve the MOU, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That's approved. Thank you. On our final action item number seven, approve increase in the number of inter-district transfer slots. So let's have a motion first, and then we can ask questions and discuss.
I move that the board of directors approve the recommendation to increase the number of available inter-district transfer slots to accommodate the incoming requests received.
Second. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica that we approve the increase in the inter-district transfer slots. Beth, do you have any highlights for us or things you want to share, or you're just ready for a few questions?
Oh, I, yeah, just take questions if you like.
Sure. So this, we do this, it's not our first time doing this, so hopefully I think we're all pretty familiar with this. But if anybody does have any questions or comments, then this would be the time. Okay. All right. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica that the board of directors approve the recommendation to increase the number of available inter-district transfer slots to accommodate the incoming requests received. If you would like to approve the increase in the number of slots, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right. Wonderful.
I would just like to say that the number of students requesting to leave our district was significantly below what we had open to slots for, so that's really great.
That's great. All right. So we are at the school bond project scope and budget overview with Adam, who's going to update us on all of this awesome work in 15 minutes or less.
Diane, are you fired up? Okay, good. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. This is our, our big reveal. We're not really revealing anything, but we want to bring everybody up to speed on the progress we're making with the bond, both in terms of the projects we did last year and what we have coming up this year, starting this year, which is our biggest year of our bond. So 20, oh, man. 2018 projects. We put flexible classroom furniture in 13, or no, 11 of our elementary schools. We put new playgrounds in four of our elementary schools, and we approved the parent bus drop offs in three of our elementary schools. Completed. We also put new modular buildings, replacing old portables at those four elementary schools. We had three roofing projects last summer. We completed the first of our secure entry vestibules at Century. We're going to be doing that work in every one of our buildings. In addition, we had boiler replacement at Brownsville School. We did some security. addition, we had boiler replacement at Brown Middle School. We did some security fencing at Loud Acres. We moved some portables from existing school sites, including Reedville, up to North Plains. And the one thing I didn't have on there was we also completed work on 15 of our elementary school, or of our schools for the DAS project. That's the repeater systems that we have in our schools. The remaining 15 schools will be done by this time next year, and all of our DAS work will be done. We put chrome look carts in every school. Other technology projects are ongoing, including the dark fiber ring. We anticipate having that done probably about this time next year. I get weekly updates right now as to the progress that they're making. We also put in new synthetic turf fields at Blanco and Hill High. We have the track at Hill High. We've been looking for folks that are ribbon cutting. And then obviously their big kind of high-profile job this last year was the remodel of Reedville Elementary School and all of that. So, looking ahead to this coming summer, actually, some of this is already underway. We're putting the flexible classroom furniture in the remaining 13 elementary schools. In addition, we're putting the new secondary furniture in those buildings where we're adding new classroom space. So at Evergreen, we'll be putting the new furniture in those new classrooms that they're building as they come online, rather than putting the old stuff in when we do the rest of the building. We have big improvement projects happening at Brown Middle School. That's primarily seismic roofing, lots of general interior work, HVAC, air conditioning, and generally just trying to make more inviting learning spaces. That's pretty consistent with what we're doing at all of the middle schools, Pointer, Evergreen. Eastwood Elementary School, we have all of the interior work that we're doing, including safety and security in all buildings. We're also replacing their old portable classrooms with a new modular building to include restrooms. We're also building a new gym at both Eastwood and Newberry. Hillsborough, a big picture. Lots of kind of structural things, roofing, boiler, water pipe replacement work. Lennox Elementary School, we're putting in the new, I think this comes later, but we're putting in a new parent bus drop-off in addition to all of the internal work in the building. Mentor Bridge Elementary, remember last year we put in the interior walls at Eastwood Elementary School? Same kind of a project at Mentor Bridge. This summer, on a little larger scale, they required even more walls. Newberry, very similar to Eastwood, internal work to the building, modular building to replace old portables, and a new gymnasium and playground. Pointer Middle School, very similar to Brown, lots of interior work, structural, seismic, safety and security, and generally just creating more inviting learning spaces. West Union, in addition to the work we're doing at all the other buildings, we're also doing some additional ADA work there. We're putting in an elevator that they haven't had before. We're actually making our newly built ADA compliant playground ADA compliant by getting ramps to it now. And then at Loud Acres Elementary School, we're doing the water, domestic water pipe replacement project that was originally gonna be done last summer, but is now being done this summer. I mentioned briefly, we're building new gyms at Newberry and Eastwood. Those will be ready for students probably around Halloween time, something like that. North Plains, we're gonna actually start construction in the fall, and that one will be done by the end of the school year, be ready for next year. This is the one, this and the parking at North Plains were the things that Principal Smith out there said, "I can, I can make it to when the new school in North Plains opens, but I need some help with parking, and I need some help with PE." So we bumped this, those two projects up. Jackson Elementary School, this was another project that was originally scheduled to be done last year. It's a new parent bus drop-off. That will be broken ground as soon as kids leave Lenox Elementary School, new parent bus drop-off, that site. This is the new parking area. This is the new gym at North Plains. This is North Avenue up here, so the main school is right here. So that will be the new parent, urban parent drop-off and parking area, and we're building, rebuilding the parent, the bus drop-off there.
Adam, can I ask a question while you're at that side avenue? So we'll be around there, everybody, that area, yeah. Did, did the design changes result in any engagement with committee, or did you go in over?
Well, we met, we went to a PTA meeting, right, and we met with, we brought everybody. We brought the engineer, the civil engineers, the traffic engineers, the architects. I think there was more of us than there were of the parents attending the PTA meeting. But we walked them through a slideshow that both the traffic engineer and the architect did, basically talking about what they saw when they visited the site, what they observed, what the issues were that they observed, and then what the design is intended to do and how it addresses those concerns that they heard. And by the end of that meeting, we had addressed all of the questions, and everybody that was at the meeting anyway agreed that this was a workable solution that would allow us to queue way more parents in the parking lot. It separates the buses. One of the big issues was how we get everybody out of the existing parking lot because it's so constricted. And the design allows buses freer movement. Part of it also is that the North Avenue is gonna be improved as a result of the new development that's going in across the street. So that'll be a, it will be a three-lane road now, which allows more turning radius for our buses. So the engineers, traffic engineers, all feel that this design will address the concerns that they observe, have to pick up in drop-off areas, and the community we serve.
Thank you. One of the entities that's been bettered quite a bit was the city council in North Plains. Have they seen this, or did you give any information that you can pass on?
Yes, I think so. We're gonna be back out there at the Ice Cream Social on the sixth?
Sixth June.
The sixth of June.
And now the road show.
Well, we'll have all of our, we'll have everything there.
Oh, all of your traffic engineers going back to Ice Cream Social?
I've heard, I've heard the presentation, five or six times now, so I think I'm good. But again, if we need to come back and talk to some more folks, I, we have shared it with Andy, so I think he's on board with us now.
Yeah, his parents were hopeful, but the city councils were maybe even worse. Did we address the Memorial Baseball Field and the displacement of the playground?
We're in the process, yeah. We don't know exactly what the playground piece is yet because we don't know how much of the playground we're displacing. So what I can tell you is they will have a full playground next year. Don't know exactly what it's gonna look like or where it's gonna be. It really depends on how much of the existing playground gets displaced by the new gym.
And Memorial Baseball Field?
Memorial Baseball Field, we're actually working with Ryan Petrick, is reaching out to the family there. We will, we will have a baseball field there. It's just now working out the particulars around the rededication.
Awesome.
Society.
Thanks.
Brookwood, we're breaking ground in the first of our prototype elementary schools at Brookwood. You've driven by the way you walk in here, you were there for groundbreaking. So that's, that's a happening thing. Is that it? No, there it is. Evergreen. So this is the new Evergreen. This is the new pod coming off of the building. This is the existing classroom wing. That will include a new media center and eight new classrooms, and then we're converting the old media field library into other classrooms. We're expanding the commons area, filling in the pit there in the commons, and expanding the serving area for the lunch. So it's, it's gonna feel like, I think, a new building. Beautiful Century Turf Field, you were all part of that groundbreaking, I think. And then this is the new early childhood education modular building that's going in. This is, this is the back entrance off of the parking lot, so the health center's kind of up here.
That's where grass is right now, correct?
Was.
Was. Was, it is, you know?
Now it's, looks like that, yeah. And then obviously Blanco High School, another major addition renovation project similar to Evergreen in that we're building a new media center, new classrooms, converting the old library into classrooms, building a new commons area to connect the old, the main building with the cafeteria. So we will no longer have to go outside to get to the cafeteria. Doing lots of other improvements on the inside of the building for CTE programming.
That's a lot, that's a lot of expansions in classrooms and areas that Evergreen led up the theater, so basically enhancing the capacity of that feature.
Yes, we're adding capacity for 200 students at Evergreen and 400 students, excuse me, at Blanco. And again, Blanco is going to be a 14 to 16-month project. It'll be ready for student, it'll be complete for fall of 2020. It'll be going all through, oh, next school year. Evergreen will be done probably around spring break. Hill High, which I think we're coming up to, will be, also be a 14 to 16-month project, so it'll be ready for students. It'll be complete. We're gonna have students in all these buildings all next school year. We'll be out of there at the start of the 2020 school. Hill High, we're doing improvements at all of the classroom buildings. Right now, we're in the business education building. That building is basically gutted. We've come in, do all the seismic work, replace the ceilings, replace the floors, add skylights, again, trying to make them a more inviting learning environment for students. Upgraded the commons. That's the work they're doing in the gym right now. This'll be the new admin entry area. We're also doing work in the media center. So lots of cool stuff happening there. The Liberty Sustainable Agriculture Program, this is probably yesterday or day before, we're actually breaking ground on that project. That's on the backside of the Liberty campus, kind of fronting onto Jacobson Road. And then this will be the new secure entry vestibule. Again, what we're trying to accomplish there is we want people to have to enter the main office before they have access to the rest of the campus. Some of our buildings, that's easier than others. Century High School is pretty easy because we already had two, we had an entry vestibule. We just kind of had to put the door into the, the office. Liberty's a little more difficult because if you walk into that building, you're in that huge propena and you can basically access. So we're building this entry that kind of forces people into the office before they have access in the facility. Then our new Satellite Transportation Support Services Building, this is on the other side of Jacobson Road. So the new Sustainable Light Building will be over in here. This will be our new transportation facility. This will be, we're breaking ground on that the 21st of June, and that will be ready for buses next August. So, lots of stuff. This is by far the biggest year of our bond. We're starting about $220 million worth of construction projects, when you add in all the other costs that go along with that. This'll be probably $300 million worth of our $450 million bond program. So it's a big, it's a big effort. Our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee is taking the first of their field trips on the 27th of June. They'll be doing one in June, one in July, and one in August, and I'll make sure you get invitations to those. You're welcome to join us. We'll have a glass of root beer at dinner, so.
When do we go off for the next bond act, for the, not, not public act, but the sale of the subsequent bonds?
Oh, oh, June 20, or June of 20 is what we've targeted. It really depends on how quickly we spend what we've got. We need to make sure we're within the 85% piece, but that's what we're targeting right now.
That'll just be one more?
Yeah. We've got about $138 million worth of bonds yet to sell.
Anything else?
Questions?
Martin?
I'd just like to commend Adam and the entire staff for the continued ongoing outreach. This is the best I've ever seen in terms of transparency and engagement. I was with Jimmy in at the proud of HSD where the bond had a booth, there continues to be a lot of interest, and I really appreciate the Capitol team being out there. And I think you're gonna get swamped at the Ice Cream Social in North Plains. The mayor says that is the little...
It's just the ice cream stuff.
Yeah, I know. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And again, the website that James put together is just, it's awesome. The folks that I work with on a regular basis who do this for a living say it's the best they see. So it really is awesome. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much, Adam. Okay, first reading of chemistry and biology materials adoption.
Thank you. I'm gonna try my colleagues up here today. Thank you for subduing this rock for me. Tonight, I do want to introduce Becky King-Smith and thank her for her leadership in our curriculum adoption process across the area. And Andy Byerly, especially thanking Andy for his work with our teachers as we developed our physics first and ninth grade, our chemistry and biology course sequence. You'll remember that in 2014, 15, we convened the science study team to start to figure out how the next generation's science standards would help us improve our science programs in HSD. And so fast forward through the alignment of those standards, K-8 adoption, we got to ninth grade physics and the professional learning that came along with that change in our system. Today, we have many more students accessing physics than ever have before. And today, you're gonna hear an intro to our proposal for materials and professional development plan for chemistry and biology. And this will normally be a 30-day, meeting will be a 14-day, given the span of time between this meeting and next. So between now and two weeks from now, we hope to answer your questions if you have any about this. And without further ado, I'm gonna introduce Becky. Andy, can you say more about our process and what we are to do with science?
Thank you, Travis.
So to complete the science adoption process, this has been a five-year process, as Travis has shared with you. Throughout this process, we followed our work policy for how we go about adopting materials. We identified our strengths and weaknesses in our science program. We developed goals, and we are just completing the process of piloting our materials and technology in order to meet those goals and hope that they become around reality in our science classrooms across our district. In spring 2017, the Board approved our K-8 science materials and our Physics 1 science materials. And so tonight, we're proposing our materials for chemistry at the 10th grade level and for biology at the 11th grade level. This is a timeline that shows exactly at the high school level what courses we implemented and the materials that were piloted, and ultimately with full implementation with next school year. The full implementation is our guaranteed course sequence that our high school science study team voted on in 2015, which was a physics, chemistry, biology sequence, which was a shift from what we had initially at our schools, which at some of our schools was different than other schools. So now we have all four of our high schools are on a physics, chemistry, biology sequence, with next year being a full implementation. This evening, we're hoping to finally conclude this process by proposing our materials and technology for chemistry and biology.
Hello, I'm Andy Byerly. I'm a high school math and science teacher, I'm a specialist and I want to echo Travis and Becky's thanks. Really appreciate being able to share the team's work. It's been a lot of work over the past many years. Our chemistry committee included eight pilot teachers from all four high schools, myself as a TOECA representative, and four high school and district administrators. And of course, our job is to help our students become proficient in the next generation's science standards. science standards. And we began our process by looking at eight different programs before selecting three to pilot. And one of the priorities for us was making sure that we had access to high-quality curriculum for all of our students. And so we're looking at a range of print and digital materials and available in different languages, particularly Spanish. Through the process, our team realized that a lot of the published science curriculum doesn't yet support all parts of the next generation science standards. This is a relatively new set of standards that Oregon adopted in 2014. So we needed some supplements to make our instructional materials complete. So for example, modeling is a very important practice of science, and we needed our, some resources that our students in modeling. After the pilot, our teachers, the majority of our teachers are in favor of adopting the Patterns Chemistry course from the Portland Metro STEM Partnership. And we also were unified that we needed a set of Chromebooks and reference texts in each classroom, as well as the lab materials to teach that Patterns course. And we'll review those materials in just a moment. The next slide looks strikingly similar. Oh, there it is, okay. On the biology side, our team included four biology pilot teachers, two from Glencoe and two from Liberty High Schools, as well as planning team members from Century and Hillsborough High Schools, and as well as myself and some administrators. The process looked very similar to chemistry. We looked at six different programs, but five, we're piloting two with the same focus on digital access and multilingual support. Every teacher on our pilot team preferred a classroom set of Chromebooks for students, as well as an actual textbook. And when we surveyed our current biology students, only 17% of them preferred a digital-only solution. So we are recommending a set of 40 textbooks for each biology classroom. As with chemistry, a majority of high school science teachers are in favor of adopting the Patterns Biology course from the Portland Metro STEM Partnership, along with some supplemental materials to pick up where one particular program needs on. Quickly going through some specific resources here. The Patterns Chemistry course is one that has been developed through a regional collaboration with the Beaverton School District, Portland Public Schools, and the Portland Metro STEM Partnership. We feel like it's in our teachers' and students' best interest to be at the table in that collaboration. And the best part is that those curriculum materials are free. So that is, that is one of the biggest reasons we're doing that, as well as it continues the sequence from Patterns Physics, which we also adopted. As I mentioned earlier, it's a, it was a high priority for each of our pilot teachers that we adopt a textbook as a supplement, partly because the Patterns materials are not yet available in Spanish or any other language, and because we have a lot of teachers who will teach chemistry when that is not their primary specialization. So maybe they're a biology and a chemistry teacher, and so we want to have some professional learning resources for them as well. On the biology side, the only thing I'll add here is, and some of you were able to join us for some classroom visits, we need to have some hands-on materials for our students to engage in modeling. This is particularly true in biology. And so our recommendation is to include some, CPUB is the name of the particular company that we're choosing to purchase from. Labings is the publisher.
Just the slides you have access to, you have more, access to more slides that we're showing tonight, just because we don't have the time to talk through all of it. I'm happy to talk about our slides, but as the board knows, we have multiple curriculum areas where we're trying to catch up in terms of our curriculum adoption. But these fall within what we have planned in terms of resources for science options. Let's give a quick reminder.
So part of our adoption process is not just the adoption of the materials and the technology, but also how are we supporting the teachers and the professional development of implementation of these materials. Much like with our physics one adoption, we will support professional development through a four-pronged approach. So regional professional learning opportunities include this summer, our teachers who will be teaching chemistry and biology next year, who have not attended the Portland Metro STEM Partnership regional trainings. It's a five-day summer course where they go through the Patterns curriculum, taught by people who have been integral in designing that curriculum, as well as teaching that curriculum in other districts. Interesting note, we just went to a meeting recently, there's about 19 districts in the state of Oregon who are going with this Patterns approach. So it's notable that what this means is that this is a curriculum that is constantly being updated. In fact, we have teachers on the regional councils for physics, chemistry, and biology, which is the team of teachers throughout the state who look at these curriculum materials and are making constant updates and recommendations for changes that is then taken to the committee to review. We also have district-level collaborations. So this summer, we will be supporting some extended contract days for our chemistry and biology teachers to meet and do the planning necessary in order to implement these materials in this curriculum the next school year. We also will continue with what we did this year, which is regular meetings of our teachers from all four of our buildings in the planning and implementation of chemistry and biology. We also have been doing that for the last three years with physics, as we've continued the implementation and refinement of that. Professional learning communities within our schools so that the teachers in the one school who all teach chemistry together and all teach biology together use that as an opportunity to refine their practice, look at data, make adjustments. And then finally, virtual resources and learning. We know it's not always possible to pull our teachers to meet, and so these are opportunities where we can meet digitally and have discussions digitally in order to improve our practice as well.
Rebecca Nelson is our chair of our CCAC, and she texted me today, she can hear something came up for her, and so I'm sorry you have to listen to me. Rebecca's way more fun. She facilitated some of the classroom visits, the vote to bring this board tonight to the board. I'll just make a couple of comments that characterize the conversation that the CCAC members had and what they were enthusiastic about regarding our science adoption. One was the multi-district partnership that we talked about. We really wouldn't be here without the strong Portland Metro STEM partnership relationships that we have and the expertise that comes to the table around science in that way. The hands-on and collaborative nature of what they saw when we visited classrooms and the board members were in classrooms as well, seeing how we teach is different than perhaps the way we learn science when we were at school. And then the mixture of technology, books, and interactive kits that we saw. The one that resonated with me that I saw was the Helix that we built and worked about the genetic code and all that, the hands-on model that Andy referred to. So with that, there were all yes votes, we had five yess. Two folks abstained, I think because they had, they'd been working long with the business and riot the whole time, and then zero no votes, so we're looking forward to it for tonight for your consideration. Again, 14-day review until we would ask that you approve this plan. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions regarding chemistry and biology.
Jackie. I just had a question, Mr. Byerly? Did I say that right?
You did, well done.
You mentioned the low percentage when you pulled students and wanting ebooks. Do you know if that's because of lack of access to computers outside of school, or is it just they're not used to that? I'm just curious if it really doesn't matter. I just wondered if it was lack of access.
That's a great question. So I actually asked Don Wolf, our previous chief technology officer, if we had any data around what percentage of students and families don't have access outside of school. And we don't have good data on that. What I heard when I talked to students is just that they're inundated with digital all day long. And so while they don't mind having some of their resources available digitally, they really prefer having a textbook as well. And both of the options we have have both on the line and appropriate.
Awesome, thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. And I asked a lot of the classrooms one of these things, it was wonderful, it was a lot of fun, so I'm excited.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone, that brings us to our financial report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Michelle? I don't see any questions or comments. Would you like to share anything with us that you didn't write in your report? All right. Thank you for at least being so thorough with that, Michelle. We do appreciate it very much. Policies for first reading. Do you want to walk us through, or do you want us just to ask questions? I would like to do that.
So Jackie had some questions, and let me get to the heart of these. All right. Jackie, do you want to go through, or do you want me just to, and give you? How do you want to do this?
Oh, I'll ask you, because there's a couple of, I took out of my questions. So on page 161, GBDA Mother Friendly Workplace, version two. From what I can tell, we have three possible of our 37 sites that have a place for new moms or new dads to either nurse or, what do they call it, a mom, a mother's room, or a private room, or the first school restroom, or family resource room. The rest of the places, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, they have to do it in the restroom, in the closet, in the kindergarten classroom, in the kiln room, in a workroom, in a server closet, and I just think we can do better than that. Nobody wants to nurse a new baby or pump in a women's restroom, or in any restroom.
So the way this, so as you, as you see by the policy, we are obligated to identify spaces and actually to list those out for votes.
Right.
The way that the process actually works is that the, the staff member or the person who needs a space, they work with the principal and they identify a space. So even though there are certain spaces listed, that doesn't mean that's a space that everyone goes. If there is a, if there's a space that's more conducive for that person than that, then we, we work. The challenge is that we have to, we have to create a list.
Because that list really is.
And the, and the, and the list is created for schools that are 40 and 50 years old that didn't have code requirements that are similar to now. So, but do know that we work with the staff members and every accommodation that we possibly can.
Okay. I figured that was the answer. I just, it makes me sad when I see somebody who has to do that in a restroom. So page 168, instructional resources, instructional materials, why is the last seven red?
It shouldn't be red.
Okay.
It should be, that one should be green. No.
Green? Shame on you. Page 213, the gang dress attire and our property.
Yep. Dale was going to address that for us. There's two different aspects to that that we wanted to, wanted you to hear about.
Okay.
Hold on. I can just project, I'll just project. So two things, we actually have been in conversations, there's an organization called Oregon Now, and it has language that is a little less like judgmental of females in particular and their dress code. And one of our system principals just brought that to us, and they actually are starting to have conversations about how we can kind of keep that policy as much intact, but then really look at like the way that the AR looks in terms of being like, instead of no spaghetti straps, no bra straps showing, which is kind of in our handbook, be more like adequate body coverage, whether you're a female, or a male, or transgender, like, we don't, you know. There's also things, that doesn't disrupt the learning environment, but that's sort of victimizing somebody. That's disruptive to me, but not to you, so kind of that concept of maintain your own disruption. So there's some language in there that we're kind of playing with that, that will kind of get a little more nuanced. The second thing is, is the gang, the gang attire and those sorts of things. We're actually in conversation with Alex O to relook at that. We try to do that semi-frequently because it's trends change and different kinds of things.
I just wondered if, because I looked at the student dress and appearance policy that we have, it's very, very, it's very vague, which, and I believe it's more detailed in the conduct, the student handbook and conduct handbook.
Right.
So that's why I was wondering if maybe if we need that specific policy on gang dress and attire, or if we can roll that in over to student conduct where the other dress code is. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Maybe we need a policy for it, and I, you know, that's like, my question is, if we don't have our regular dress policy in, as a, or code as a policy, why do we have a gang dress code as a policy? I don't know. Is there a reason that I don't know about?
I think if you look back a while ago, we used to have, there used to be an interagency gang enforcement in Washington County. And from that came current trend, trend specific to gang attire, as specific as certain clothing, attire, et cetera. So they had to get that specific to enforce, buildings to enforce the current trends. So I think it's more of a historical thing.
And I'm fine with being specific because I, I really get and understand that that's the purpose of the gang dress code. I'm just wondering, why is it in policy in an AR and not just in student handbook or the other dress codes? So it's like we have completely called it out and called attention to it as a, as a policy slash AR, but we haven't done that with the dress code, so shouldn't it be taken out of policy and put in the student handbook? That's my question. And maybe there's a reason, like I said.
We'll have to confirm this, but I seem to remember it had something to do with enforcement down the road, like through with the juvenile department and having any policy. I ought to confirm that, but it was a little bit before I got into the district.
Okay.
I seem to remember something like that.
Okay. Yeah, if you can, maybe in a board update, we can maybe get that.
So we were, we kind of jumped to AR, so no, that's not your fault.
Did I?
It's okay. It wasn't you, it's okay.
It was Tony.
Oh, I think it was this guy over here. So, so does anybody have any other questions or comments about the policies and then what was the ARs?
Oh, I jumped.
Maybe it was you, I think it was Mike.
It's okay.
All right, so then, all right, so then any other comments or from anyone else about the ARs and also from Jackie? Because I said from anyone else, but I meant like also if there were others, two, I wasn't , I'm sorry. You're great, but also if anybody else has thoughts, too. Do you have others, Jackie?
I think that's, I have so many of those, it's just, it's, no, I, oh yeah, that is back in the other one, the present agenda, so I'll talk to Mike about that later. Okay. Because it's too late.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments on the ARs? All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda then, and we will invite HCU and HGA representatives up to join us. Come on down.
Hi, Jim, Gley, HGA, please. I'm going to go first tonight because next month's Devon's last, last time repairs, so I have to let him go first, that's next month's. But no, it's been great, and I have something really awesome about it for next month. Wanted to start out by saying May 8th was amazing. I think it was a beautiful thing. There was so many people down there, and I truly believe that all the educators that joined us together, all the brothers and sisters in the union, that we really made a difference. I believe that in my heart, I believe that we helped to pass the Student Success Act, and it was just a great day. May 8th is a great day, and the day the governor signed the bill was even more amazing. And so I'm very excited. I know it's only 18% of what we need, but I feel like we're heading in the right direction. And I'm looking forward to, and also fellow union members are looking forward to just sharing with the community what that's going to do for our district and how they can help us and support us, I think, tonight when we listen to some of the community folks from the high schools, should they share the kinds of concerns they have. And I feel like, you know, we do have the opportunity to let them know how we are appreciative of the money, and I feel like that, that would help them to support us as we look forward to a little bit of unknown as to what's going to happen with the Student Success Act, and what it will be as a measure of value and things like that. I also am very happy about last week's results. Our recommended candidate was elected and would be I also am very happy about last week's results, our recommended candidate was elected and will be joining you shortly, and so it's just a very happy evening, and I know that we worked hard to help with that, and I myself did some canvassing the weekend before, and we are very elated and excited and looking forward to your, your new year with you. Joanne Cramer is here this evening, and she has been working with me this last, last couple of months, and she is the person who will be reaching out to you folks to set up a coffee date. I know she did that last year, but she hasn't met everyone, and it's nice just to check in once in a while, and so she'll be reaching out to you guys. She's here tonight, so thanks for coming. And, you know, last week I spent three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, now Friday, in Pers. You know, it's really disheartening. I myself, you know, looking, I'm officer, which is like the tier three, but they call it officer, and the point certified that will be redirected to help with the funded liability will impact my IAP by 28%, because I will be here for a few more years. And so it is going to impact a lot of, a lot of teachers, a lot of educators, and also other folks that are, that have parents, you know, are relying on that as, as their pension. So it was nice to hear that there was a discussion about that, and ways that we can, we can use of the teachers as we look forward to what I believe is going to be something that is unavoidable. I, I spent four hours on Saturday talking, representing, complaining, and, you know, it's disheartening, it really is. So I don't know what else to say about it, but, you know, because we miss people together. This Friday is our retirement dinner we have at the Hills of Education Association, celebrates all of our retirees, and we take them to dinner, have a coffee, rent an office, of course, and it's beautiful and amazing, and it's just a bright spot in the year. It's one of my favorite events, and we have a dozen teachers joining us with their spouses this Friday, and I'm very excited, and I'm looking forward to spending that time with them and honoring them. And we also do a book swap every summer, and it's at the Saturday market, where we peddle our books and give them away to kind of younger through sixth grade. And we're looking at also possibly participating in additional weekly opportunities to share about our 50/53 as a brand to the community, as well as how important the Student Success Act is, and how important it is for the district to receive that, those funds. And I think that's all, thank you.
Good evening. So like Jill said, this is my second to last board speech, so I'll talk more about what I've learned in the next one. But I think, right now I kind of want to talk a bit about sort of what happened to it on May 8th, because it's sort of a, sort of a great gay moment, that everyone's coming together, and then that evening, I got word, was notified that we were going to have layoffs for classwork staff this year. And that started kind of a really tumultuous time with our relationship between HCU and HSD. And I think a lot of that comes down to, the calendar just was against us, and HR decided to do reductions in hard mode, I guess, by sort of inferring what the results of the contract was, not including their union partners, in talking about budget reductions and identifying ways to avoid layoffs, to have those conversations, because we were notified on the 8th, and then letters started going out the 9th and 10th. And I don't think we've ever really truly had a sit-down meeting to talk about the layoffs, to go over the staffing sheets, to really understand what's going on, so when people come to me freaking out that they're losing their job, or getting moved to another area, I can't, I don't have the ability to give them context as to what's happening. And, you know, our HR department's really good at a lot of things, they're really good at retaining staff, they're really good at finding homes for people, they're not really good at doing layoffs. Because honestly, we haven't really done it in the last however many years, and we don't expect to do it again for the foreseeable years. And when we run into something that we've never, that we haven't really done before, that we don't have competency in, it's really useful to bring in your union partners, use us as a way of having conversation with staff. So, you know, when someone says, hey, I want to institute my bumping rights, we can look up, instead of wasting HR time, we can look at the staffing sheet and say, there's no one for me to bump, this is why this isn't happening. And I think that's, that's frustrating, because, you know, we, like, the last five years that I've been working with management, we've had a very collaborative process. And it just feels like in the last two months that really sort of fell apart. The wheels kind of flew off of us, and we're kind of lurching towards the end of the year, it's really hard. But we've been able to meet, we've been able to talk face-to-face, we've been able to address a lot of the issues. I think there has been some recognition on where things have gone sideways, where they should have gone, you know, where we saved, where we should have zagged, and I'm hopeful, because when we sit down and talk to each other, instead of having conversations over email, or doing things sort of last minute, or rushing without a lot of time to talk about it, it just makes things worse. And fortunately, I think we're down to like, I think it was 15 layoffs that we're, that we're gonna have, where we had about, I think almost 30 before, so the HR department's done frequently and passed the final for almost everybody. And I hope that when those people do get laid, that those layoffs do happen, that those folks might think about becoming a bus driver, because at least they'll have seats there. And it could save, if every single one of them have a job, if they all decided to become bus drivers, if they really needed it. Which is sort of worked for anyone. So, so there's hope, and there's ways you keep people, and I think as long as we're working together, we have to. And what I wanted to expose last week is about secondary media centers. They're really not becoming libraries anymore, they're really like, because we are reducing the hours that media systems have in the library, which is for budget reasons, I'm not going to dive into that. I'm really concerned that our students are not going to have a place to, to do recreational reading, to place to check out books, to go and get things that aren't related to their coursework, to, you know, have fun while reading, because recreational reading is one of the most important things, I think, that a student can have when they leave high school. That is, that when a student leaves high school, that they still read books, that they still are interested in continuing their education through that. And I worry that if, without having full-time media center folks, the library just won't be open. And they just won't have opportunities to check out books and have access to that, unless they have the privilege to be able to go to the local library. And that's not an option for everybody. So hopefully we can bring back some hours for them in the next biennium, but until then, just kind of hopefully media centers and libraries and those type of books still exist in our district in five years, which I'm not really sure it is. So that's good for us, but I look forward to our next meeting, and I'm back to Ted in three weeks? Two weeks? Three weeks? Two and a half, so who's counting? How we doing?
Thank you both. So you will start our, our special come up here with the student representatives tonight, just for us to, since it's not like it's this evening. Anything you'd like to share with us?
I was, is there, can I talk about the program?
Uh...
In the same way as anybody else?
I was, when I'm not going to give.
Okay.
But you are welcome as student representative to talk about what, what you will.
I just want to say a couple of things about it, I know we've heard a lot about it tonight, but as a faculty representative and a school board member, I just wanted to say a little bit. I just wanted especially to pull on, the program has built up quickly, and as everything I've been fighting for, our coaches and our teachers mean a lot to the students, and to have this program almost not be a part, be a part at the same time, it's taken a toll. And I know people have come up and talked about it, so I want to explain more on it, but it's a big thing, and that everything I fought for with the money going down to Salem, this is, this is a very similar thing, because this program means almost, this program, sorry. The program just means a lot to students, and I've seen at firsthand of how it has helped motivate students. And I've seen students gone from Fs to almost As and Bs today. As I was saying earlier, their GPA is a third point over higher for the entire team, which is really a tough whole for the century. And it's just the study calls, and the fact that they do monthly report card checkups and everything like that, it helps motivate the students while giving them a family, and giving them lots of worth. The, on a completely different note, we just had Jackfest this past week over the century, and our event was Nickelodeon, which is like for our students, it was a big throwback for all of us, as you did just from when, the, when we were all children. And it was just a really fun time, we had Jackalooza, we had VR time, which is the headset, and the children, the students, they got to work with that, and that was a really fun time, I totally thought it went through well. We had a rub tackle exhibition as well, so people got to handle snakes and everything like that for a stand. That was a really cool thing, and that's in addition to everything else. So Jackfest was a really cool thing that happened to us, I don't think we've done that almost since the start. And then parents wrap it up, maybe bring some tissues to next board meeting, and we'll say nothing about that. And that's it.
Superintendent's time.
Alright, thank you. So I would just say to Devon's comments that, just a couple of thoughts there. First of all, it's always our goal to have a positive relationship with every, every organization that we work with, and HCU is indeed in that, in that category. Do you know that when it comes to making budget reductions like we had, like we've had to do, I mean really that is where the rubber meets the road, and it is, I think it's hard to try and measure intent when there's those type of situations going on. Do you know that HR has worked really hard to preserve as many of the jobs as humanly possible? And I know it because they've done draft after draft after draft, and scenario after scenario, to make sure that we are saving as many possible jobs as we can. When we first started this process, we were under the impression that through attrition, we wouldn't have to lay people off. We got that conversation, we got that conversation with the board, and the fact of the matter is there hasn't been a number of retirements that typically has been, and so that has diminished our ability to get that. With, with the 15 or so that, I don't know how many it is today, but with the 15 or so that remain, HR will continue to work, and as, as we go through the remainder of the spring, we're hopeful that we will be able to add more of those back. So I'm, I'm sorry that you're feeling the way that you are, don't, just know that HR is doing their best to save every possible job they can, so. Couple other things, congratulations to Sheen on her election. I know you campaigned hard and worked really hard for that, so congratulations. I would also echo what Martin said, we had a good time at the retirement event. 1,200 years of experience, retirement this year, that is, it's a lot of years of experience going out the door. And I'll say thank you to Olga and the PAC. For those people that have been around and have seen the PAC interact with the board over the last 10 years, just the, the degree of interaction and the, the sense of empowerment felt by the PAC at this point is unlike anything I've seen before, the work that they're doing and the leadership that they're building throughout the community is just incredibly impressive, and I just, just love that. Martin and I and Adam had a chance to do a Rotary presentation, we're visiting those organizations that allowed us to talk about the bond. And so we went back to the Rotary and gave them a update on things, and they, they were appreciative of that. And I will wrap it up by saying, thank you to Val, this could be the longest, most thick packet in the history of board meetings, so thank you for all of your work to get that ready, and we will see everyone at graduations soon.
Board of directors, time to start with Jackie.
So I wanted to, I know our early college program lottery went through, and I know that we've been looking at opportunities to not have to be given spots from Beaverton. And I just really want to encourage us to continue looking at those opportunities, building those relationships to increase the number of students, because I know that we had more students than we had spots, and there's some pretty upset parents that, because their students did, which I can completely understand, I would have been upset as well. So I hope we can work to maybe increase that as we move forward, build those relationships. I'm looking forward to graduations, my son's going to graduate, I have to cry. So, and I have a kid at each school that I have to give their diploma to, so I'll be at home. That's it, cheer cheer.
Thanks Mike, it was a lot of fun, Rotary, and also at the retirement, and also the annual Val's and Sal's recognition luncheon also was a lot of fun, and Beth does a great job with that, setting Mike and everybody else up for success. What an uplifting thing, one of the speakers, Joe, his son was in that room, and just an amazing young man, as were all the people in that room, amazing young women and young men, to hear what their plans are. And also, one of the things that Mike has every, every Val or Sal do is, what would be your advice to becoming freshmen? That's pretty, pretty insightful too, a lot of fun. On a more serious note, I really appreciate the sentiments about Pers cost containment, likely things being disheartening, I share that sentiment. And, you know, I keep giving voice to this cost containment side of the coin, and I, it doesn't give me any joy. But I do think as a board, we have to soberly and in informed position, you know, in a forthright way tackle that issue, because it's a huge impact to the, to the funding we can put in the classroom. So we did it in sort of an ad hoc way, but Mike and Michelle, I would like to ask maybe if there's a more form of Pers briefing? I, I think on the board here, there isn't really an understanding of Pers. And so Pers itself actually has kind of good, Pers 101 briefings, that they'll even come out and do, maybe this is a good work session thing, where we spend an hour, and the seven of us get really a shared understanding of what Pers is, what it does, you know, the difference between tier one and officer. I think if we, we have an eye for the long game, which we should, we should know that the retirement benefits that Pers represents is a diminishing, of diminishing value. So what does that mean to us as a board and as an employer? I think this board, this seven people, including Sheen, really need to understand that, because these changes are happening on our watch, and, and we need to deal with that appropriately. The upside is more money in the classroom, the downside is it's hit for every single employee in the district. And so I'm not entirely sure that as a board, we really have the working knowledge of that issue to really be what we need to be as we view this as an employer for the superstars that work for us. So I would challenge ourselves, if you don't know what Pers is, there's lots of information out there, I would encourage every one of my colleagues to get into a strong position at first. I have the benefit of 15 years of employment in the public sector under Pers, that's why I'm so strong on this issue, because it affects me. But I would challenge everyone on the board to get in a strong position, because we owe that to our employees, really to understand, when people toss around .75, 2.5, you know, because I'm only, I'm early in my career, this is a bigger hit to me than if I'm late in my career, we really need to understand what that means, because there's things potentially as an employer we can do in the long term to mitigate that impact, if we understand really what's going on with Pers. So I'm certainly up to that, and I, I want to do right by our employees, and I also want to be honest about the impact of Pers as it's currently constructed on our, on our business. So kind of, I like the words that were used, to work together, absolutely positive, we have to work together statewide to figure this out. Thank you.
Echoing Martin said, yeah, Val's and Sal's lunch was awesome, and how does all of that advice get aggregated? Like, where do we see that at some point? I know you're aggregating, where, where is it exposed at some point?
So I typed it all, and it's gonna be our, just give you a little sneaker, and it's gonna be a feature, it's gonna be the featured student's top shot on hot news, and then we'll have a link to the advice, and it'll be on our website.
Because it was all very good. It was great to see the Tobias Tigers here tonight, my, my, both my children were Tobias Tigers, and I've spent, the required amount of time, and the parent would be expected to spend in a Toby the Tiger costume. So I have a warm spot in my heart for Tobias Tigers. Very much looking forward to graduation. Dovetailing that though with, the, because of time constraints, this is my first time to get a chance to speak since we have met with the PAC this, this evening upstairs, and I will share that it, it was a little disheartening to hear from a community member recently, that they were trying to receive information... they were trying to receive information about graduation in Spanish and simply could not do it. The story shared with me was very long, over several weeks of engagement, where they eventually had to switch to English to get the information they needed about their student who was graduating. And that's very disappointing to hear that. Talking about PERS and the legislature. And so we, I think we all try to be pretty visible and I will apologize to the general community for missing several events recently. It's not a excuse, kind of a excuse. Trying to be a supportive parent of a graduating senior, Jackie, it was a case of a lot of fun. On the upside, I will dad brag, my son will be, so at the beginning of every legislative session, they have some kind of artistic expression, a poem, a reading, a musical performance. So on Thursday, my son will be the person opening the legislative session, play the piano. So I'll be down there and I will bother them one more time. That's about it. Thanks.
I am happy that the campaign is over and it went exactly how I wanted it to go. I actually left the next day for vacation, like 5:30 in the morning, I was gone. So I'm kind of forgetting about that. I too, looking forward to graduation, although I won't be able to make that high school with, I will be attending my daughter's preschool graduation over at McKinney and I'm super excited about that. It seems like it's going to be a wonderful program. My family will be doing face painting. So looking forward to that. It was great to hear from the PAC parents today. It's awesome to see how, how it has grown over time and how many more parents are getting involved. And, you know, just want to continue to, to, to build on that. And also find a way for our PAC parents and then the PTO to work together as one unit would be the ultimate, you know, goal and success that we've all come together as one community. Well, that's it.
Just what everybody else has already. I think I also enjoy having the PAC come up, but I would like them to be part of more of our meetings, maybe on a more regular occurrence. I think that's just kind of the, the, the culture of the R board is to make sure that we are providing those avenues for feedback and interaction because let's see if that's a way that we can make things better. So I'm really happy that we have that avenue with that approach and learning. I'm really excited for all the opportunities that that will create in the future. I think that's it.
Please, I prefer you don't pass it on.
I prefer if you didn't. Jessica is my...
Just like home.
Yeah.
You know, as we've been congratulating Sheen, I realize that we have not congratulated you dear and Lisa. Because they, just because they were on a post doesn't mean that they shouldn't be celebrated. So congratulations on the victory as well.
Thanks.
And we're doing that too. Make note that one of our new student school board representatives is here in the audience as well.
Wonderful. All right. Okay. All right. So like you dear, I'm also glad that the election is over, despite the effort of many of my friends, but it's funny, did not win. So that, that's great. I won. Yeah, so funny.
I didn't.
No, I know, I mean, I believe, I hope I believe you, but I have people who did who just thought it would be honey. And it was, but I still won, so thank goodness. And I'm very excited that you're also one. We had a lot of fun hanging out during the campaign. And I'm also really excited that at the end of our next meeting, Sheen and Kim will be joining us up here. It's really exciting. And to that end, also on June 11th will be Kim's last, and Jill's last meeting with us here as a board member. And so just generally, when it's a board member's last meeting, sometimes their friends or family might come and share some thoughts about their time that they've served on the board. And all of us will also have an opportunity to share some thoughts that we might have about Kim. And so just be aware of that over the next couple of weeks that if one of us doesn't make her cry, we'd be really disappointed. I think it'll be easy, but I do think that should be the goal. So it's important. Jessica's got it covered. Good job, Jessica. So I'm also really looking forward to graduations. I have to miss one of the comprehensive ceremonies, comprehensive high school ceremonies because my son has a scouting graduation thing and I have to do that. And then I also have conflicts for the two smaller events. But I'll get to go on Thursday and on Saturday. So I'm excited to do that. And I know a kid this time, my kids are young, and so usually I don't know kids at our high school graduation ceremonies yet, but I know one this time and I'm so excited. I knew one last year, it's two years in a row, and it's a kid. And so it's going to be great. I will, I'm going to, you know, I'm kind of late. Yeah, so it's going to be like, it's going to be every year now where I know someone. It's going to be great. Couple other things. This is my last full meeting as your chair. And so I probably not get another last word discussion time because the next meeting Eric is going to be a new meeting. But also lots of stuff about hers, don't worry. But just, it's been a lot of fun being the, the chair of our cast of characters for the last couple of years. And I appreciate that you trusted me with that responsibility and you put up with my very unique style and personality. So thank you. Last thing, I started reading the book White Fragility this week after the election, when I had one more time, I'm only about a third of the way through it. But for my fellow white colleagues on the board, I would definitely suggest that you give it a read. It's definitely worth the investment of time so far. If you have a desire to have a greater understanding of equity, work in your own bias and perspective and place in the world, I would really recommend it. It's great so far.
So then get...
White Fragility, like your fragile fragility.
We've got copies if anyone's interested.
I bought my own bookstore. I didn't borrow it from anybody secretly. It's mine.
I wasn't there when Lisa stole one from Dale.
That's not what happened. That's not what happened. It's not right.
You put...
I have permission, it's okay. All right, Martin.
Thank you, Lisa. So last time we met, I mentioned that Washington County had changed to EID, Equity, Inclusion and Diversity. They have changed back to DEI, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. So that is the recommendation for that password. And since I have it, thank you for excellent services as chair for two years now, chair.
That's not... The last word is supposed to be...
Well, you could have, you could slap. It's just more of a question. I know we had a bunch of people up here, but Casey, maybe it's your facilities? It is hot, Andrew. So if we find a way to have that not be the case every time, that'd be awesome.
He's really excited to test out. Great budget. Wonderful. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, June 11th, and we'll see you then. Good night.
We're at it.